This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of Killenley Town Council. It is currently 12:13 PM and we are out of recess and we will reconvene the meeting. And I will turn it back over to the Town Manager.
Sure, so we are at Department Number 44, which is Page D28. Again, I feel like I'm at bingo. Law Enforcement Administrative Building, so this is the Soap Street Facility for our law enforcement. You know, we developed the budget last year based on a lot of assumptions. We are now in the building. We weren't in the building back then. We're now in the building. So, and again, we started really occupying that building in about September, towards the end of September of 2024. So, we haven't been in there for quite a full year. But based on what we have for experience in the building, we feel that we can reduce this budget. So overall, labor, that is really just our custodian. Our custodian shares several buildings, so our custodian does this building, the WPCA Building, and the Town Hall Building. And so, based on the number of hours needed to dedicate, we're able to reduce that overall labor. We're also coming down off of contractual services support. We now have contracted the various maintenance services that are needed, so we can base that on our actual maintenance contracts. You'll note that electricity this year, we're expecting to be significantly below. However, again, it's not for an entire year, and we're also anticipating some potential increase in electrical costs. So, we've decided for that and as well as heating fuel to remain those flat and not decrease those because we do know that, number one, we haven't been in the building the entire time, for an entire year, and number two, both of those prices are likely to increase. So, our proposal is to remain those flat. Otherwise, this overall budget has a decrease. Any questions? I do want to just point out with regards to custodian, one of the reasons why our custodian doesn't have to spend as much time in this building, or it doesn't, this building is as easy to manage, I should say, is because our PD does a really good job at cleaning up after themselves. They, they're very diligent about like taking out their own trash or bringing out their own recycling. They are very diligent about that. So, they do definitely try and help share that lift, so we're not having to expend a lot of extra time on just custodian work. Next department is Community Development, Number 51. So, this is large, there's decreases throughout this, largely due to our, the portions of our work that we were doing for other municipalities. We were working, we were doing community development project work for other municipalities, so we're not, those projects have been closing out, those contracts have been closing out. And so, we no longer need to reflect the expenditure here nor the revenue elsewhere. So, this is really a net effect, but it is a decrease to this overall budget. Any questions on that one? The next one is Human Services Subsidies. So, this is our outside agencies that are requesting funding. The changes on this one, ambulance service. We've had several different presentations, but KB Ambulance is requesting an additional $10,000, so a very moderate request for the current year as in comparison to prior years. NDDH, they did pass their budget, which was a dollar more, was it 90 cents or a dollar? It was a dollar more, right? So, that reflects that per capita change there. The other ones are also per capita adjustments. The Adult Education is based on what the state is funding us for revenue. It's a direct pass-through, so if you go back and look at the revenue page for Adult Education, this matches the expenditure. This is the pass-through to the Board of Education, covering that portion of Adult Education. Paramedic Intercept, we knew was going to be an increase, so we've had not just increase in volume, but that contract has had an increase in cost. That is the Regional Paramedic Intercept Program that we participate in with NICOG. Lastly, the last two increases at the bottom, the Killenley Housing Authority, their request. This was for the chairlifts in their facility. There's the possibility or the contemplation, I left it here in the outside, in the Human Services subsidies. However, it's possible that the town may want to consider, because this is a capital endeavor, to fund this through unallocated capital funds and not utilize the mill rate for that. And then the last one, UCFS Healthcare, they had proposed last year and wasn't funded last year. They've submitted the proposal again for this year for consideration.
So, one of the United Services asks is not mandated per capita? That was the question last year before the reduction, but it was never made for the United Services. They had two asks, and one was per capita that we had to pay, and the other one was not mandatory?
Which two asks are you, I know, I have the United Services, which is your, the one that you're?
They had two last year.
She's talking about last year's ask.
Yeah, I'd have to go back to last year and look at what last year's was.
So, they didn't combine it?
I would still be interested too in that, Mary, like how much is mandated and how much isn't? Because we found out after the fact to United Health.
For United Services?
Yeah, United Services.
All right. I don't know if she outlined that in the proposal that you all got. You all got the Human Services subsidy. I'll have to go back through what her proposal was. Huh?
Because last year it was, it was two different asks, I don't know if she combined it.
It doesn't look like they've combined it because it's the same amount from previous years. So, it looks like it's the same, again, I'll have to go back and look at what the proposal is. Again, I packaged that up as a direct proposal to you all, not take individual assertion on it.
I have the book with me, and one through the fourth paragraph down says, "Our request is based on a per capita allocation of 75 cents for resident per year." We'll hope to continue. Yes.
Thanks, Tammy. I didn't have that book with me, so thank you.
I've been taking this everywhere.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on Human Services subsidy? Seeing none. That's our Youth Services Bureau. That's the Youth Services Bureau. That's our JRB. We're required to have a JRB. I'd have to go back and look. Because United Services is our JRB as well. That's our JRB. Any other questions on Human Services? Correct, that's their request.
Now, Senior Resources Agency on Aging, is that, is that just another, just kind of like the ARC?
Yes. It's similar to that. I'd have to go pull the, you have the binder.
Yeah.
Look at the binder!
Well, I didn't know, because it's all listed separately.
Yeah, no.
It's not the same as, it's not the same as the Senior QVs.
No, it's, that's not the QV. That's not the, that's not the Brooklyn Senior Center. Looks like it's Case Management. It's a separate agency.
Now, didn't they put on, weren't they the ones that would sponsor like the Senior, Senior Resource, like they used to have up at Ellis Tech? Senior Resources on Aging?
Possibly. I would have to go back and look. I can reach out and see about getting more detailed information from them. Any other questions on Human Services? Going to Employee Benefits. So, Employee Benefits. The health insurance increase is largely just due to that, the, part of it is because of just increase in our contribution to our self-insured health insurance funds. We have, we are self-insured for our health insurance. Part of it is just based on that experience and having to do additional contribution to that, but largely this is the added increase for that Parks position, right? Employer payroll taxes, that's just a calculation based on all of the wages that are listed here within the department and within the entire budget, so that also includes the increase with registrars, early voting, the part-time season, part-time, the part-time senior programming person for recreation, and the additional Parks Department, Parks position.
Did you hear any more about what the legislature was planning about the 1.5% tax to employers to fund universal daycare and also the plans for, what, childcare from six weeks?
So, I've heard those proposals. I'm not seeing those really, you know, gaining a lot of traction and support at the time. It does appear at the moment that municipalities, very similar to the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Act, municipalities are exempt, unless it's negotiated into union contracts. So, we wouldn't, like, we don't pay into, we don't pay into the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave. Because we're exempt.
But that would be a huge impact on small businesses.
Yes, for small businesses. And then Employment Pension. This is largely driven by our contribution, the required contribution into our pension, our pension fund for defined benefit, and then also the employer match on our defined contribution. This is reflecting some increase in the defined benefit piece due to some of the market fluctuations that we've seen recently.
What is our match?
I'm sorry. For the, so that we have two different types of pensions. We have one which is a defined benefit. The employees do contribute to that, but that is never a matching, right? Because a defined benefit, we specify what the benefit is when they retire, not how, so it's really based on the population that is, the employee population in that group that is eligible for that benefit. That drives what the value is that needs to be in that fund. And then there is a defined contribution which does have a employee matching. So, the match for the employee, for the employer, the, sorry, for the defined contribution plan is, we do 6%. I believe there is one unit that is at?
7% or 8%.
No? No, okay. We're all at 6.
Were those union or no?
That's everybody. Union, non-union, everybody. We'll say that has not been visited in a very, very long time, so just for the long haul, that may be something that for employee retention, employee attraction, that might be something, because a lot of municipalities have increased those, 6% was kind of the going rate. Most of them have moved upwards into the 8 and 10% range.
That would be nice. Yale is 3%.
Yeah. But, I'm just saying that when we look at comparatives and trying to, you know, attract other qualified, sometimes that can be a sticking point.
You look at the private sector and it's a lot different. Like, I believe at Safe Harbor, you're capped at 4%, I believe it is.
Yeah, so. Any other questions on Employee Benefits? I do have an increase as well, ask for employment programs, and that is our, that encompasses a lot of things, including our Drug and Alcohol Program that we do, so our random testing that we do with regards to that, as well as our annual employee recognition luncheon that we do. It also incorporates any other, like, if we're going to do tuition reimbursements or any of those other employment programs, if some of the employees activate that.
Can any of the cannabis money be used for drug testing?
No, it cannot.
Isn't it just arts and cultural, isn't it?
And remediation, mental health is the other piece to it. The next page, Insurance. There's no adjustment to insurance. So, this is our property workers' comp, and this is where we set aside money to cover any deductibles that we may have for our various insurance components. Property liability, so we've been contracting with Kerma for a number of years. We've activated and been participant of their three-year lock-in programs, so we've been able to cap the amount of exposure that we have. But, the property liability, the slight increase on that one is really due to the revaluation of renovation, of the renovation at KMS. Obviously, it's newer, newer material, and so therefore, we have to, it's kind, it's what's considered an exposure change. We're not adding anything new, but we, the quality of the material, the age of the property is now deemed different. Any questions? The next one is Special Reserves. So, the first one, Contingent, that typically has been $250,000 at the start of every fiscal year. And you've transferred money out of that, which is why in the current year, when you look at it, the balance on it is $171,000, because that is where you transfer funds from there to cover things like the non-union wage increases. So, as you've recognized through all of the budgets that have been presented to you, none of them have reflected wage increases through most of the areas, because we have non-union wage increases that are housed here in the contingent, which is, at this point, with, because all of our police department is in there as well, you're close to about $90,000 for non-union. There's also two unions that have not been ratified at this point in time. Their contracts expire June 30th. Those two union contracts will be coming to the Town Council in April, hopefully for ratification. I think we've negotiated some reasonable and equitable contracts. But with the combination of those, that's about another $70,000 that would automatically be coming out of this contingency number, which is why the request at $300,000, because that would bring you down to a starting contingency, an emergency, hopefully not for horses.
Or elevators.
Or elevators, right? Or heating systems, right? So, but that would bring it down, you know, well below the 150,000 mark, starting, just starting out of the gate at your fiscal, start of your fiscal year, right? So, that's the 300,000. We did continue the number for reserve for revaluation. That will likely in 2027 need to go increase because of your new contract for the regional revow that we just entered into. I am recommending that you fund info technology reserve at the 50,000. That 50,000 reserve number was cut last year. And again, we'll be able to go into more of our infrastructure and overall utilization of that when we go through that evaluation with Novus at the April meeting. The other reserves are all pretty much the same. I am continuing to recommend that you still set aside 40,000 each year for the reserve on the negotiation of the pilot. So, that was for us negotiating with Lake Regenerating. I know we have a contract, I get that. That contract's only a five-year contract, and we're already into year two of a five-year contract. So, you're, and it, and we tanked, and we didn't tank it, but we, we've expended all of those reserve funds. So, you're going to be starting negotiations again with Lake Regenerating in only a few short years.
I thought that was six-year.
You're right, it was a six-year, but we're still in year.
To stagger it back to where we fall.
We're in two years. And so you, and you know, if you're going to be needing to hire a consultant again, the consultants that review and manage and, and recommend that type of evaluation and do that type of appraisal, they are, they, they cost money. They're very industry-specific, so that's the recommendations. That way you don't all of a sudden run into, you know, three years from now when you're going to begin those negotiations, because remember, it's a two-year process of negotiation. So, in two years from now, you're going to be negotiating again. You probably need to make sure that you have some reserve balances in place, so that way you're not having to make a significant ask in one year for consultant fees and legal fees to do that negotiation. Any questions on reserves?
How many dams do we actually?
Dam dams. I believe we have four or five that are town. Most of them are pretty small. We only have one that, Cat Hollow is the only one that is a significant dam. All the other ones are pretty minor, but we still have to, we still have to get them inspected in a certain timeline and all of that, because the state used to do all of that. They stopped. There's another unfunded mandate. All right. Everybody good with reserves? Debt Service. So, we have a lot of them that are decreasing, because we're starting to kind of move towards the end of those debt issuances, but we still have some new ones. So, we are proposing, well, we're going to be getting ready to sell notes. We're not bonding money this year, not doing permanent borrowing, we're doing notes, which is why your interest for this upcoming year is going to be 607,000. If we had done bonds, you would have added another over seven, about $750,000 on top of that. So, given the constraints that we knew we were already going to be under with the motor, with the issues with the motor vehicle change, and with, you know, just general inflationary pressures on this budget, knowing where we are with those capital projects and wanting to only actually borrow, permanently borrow what we actually need to borrow, it made sense to do the notes. So, we're doing the notes for this year. Again, those notes are short-term notes. They will be due in October. The town will then be able to make, the management at that time will make the decision as to whether or not they roll the notes to another short-term note, or whether, how much of it gets permanently borrowed. Any other questions on Debt Service? Next page is CIP. So, this one, I hearken back to my old Finance Director days. We used to have this page in the budget somewhere along the line. It got removed out of the budget. I had Jen recreate it for the upcoming year, because I think that gives a better, clearer picture. And it's really kind of that authorization document, if you will, with regards to our overall capital outlay. So, the, this CIP program document ties to all of the Yellow Pages, but you're recognizing in here that we have four revenue sources. We're showing the capital transfer from the Highway Department. We're recognizing the amount of money coming in from Lake Road generating for the year, the unassigned portion of the Lake, of additional Lake Road generating, that closure from the capital, those additional, that closure from those, those signed funds, and how that money is being spent into these categories, right? So, you can see for the Road Renewal Payment Management Plan, we're proposing the 2.5 million for that full program. And we're closing, the closure for capital projects towards the bottom of that expenditure, it's 684,000. That cleans up everything we've been talking about with the auditors, about those old projects from, most of them are from like the 90s, long before any of us were sitting in these seats, that they were authorized, the expenditures were made in accordance with those authorizations. The grant money was either not received, or the final component of it was never borrowed or bonded back in the 90s. And so, we can't now go back out and bond for that. We checked with our auditor, with our, with our Bond Council, you know, can we still bond that even though it's been 20-plus years? No, the answer's no. So, this gave us the way to clear that all up, clean it all up. The auditors have reviewed that. They are in agreement with all of that. So, that closes out those, and you know, the largest portion of that was the, was KIS. And that was the building of KIS. So, how long has it been since we built KIS?
Forty years, 85.
Right. That was the biggest portion of the 600,000 was, they hadn't borrowed the final component somewhere along the line. I don't know whatever happened, but that's just what happened, right? They finalized, but they didn't finalize that revenue, and what they tried to do was they tried to close out the capital project in totality, but they didn't have that final revenue piece. And so, that's what the auditor kept talking about is, but you don't have this final revenue piece. You can't completely close the project out because this piece was never managed with regards to revenue receipt. So, this plug finalizes all of that. Never thought I would see it finally closed. I know, we've been doing this for a while. So, that's what these are. So, this is just kind of, kind of a more of a synopsis of what you're going to see in this, in the next pages, which are the E-pages, in the yellows. So, we can kind of dive into the yellows, and I'm going to have you go all the way to E3, because all the other pages are really just a summary. All the detail starts on E3. So, E3 is our road construction. And Road Renewal Unimproved, that's Town Aid Road Money. That is designated for our dirt roads or unimproved roads. And, right? And so, that's designated by how much of our Town Aid Road, that's designated by the state that has to go to unimproved roads, the remainder, the Town Aid Road, as well as the pavement management, the 2.5 million, which is showing as general fund contribution because it is the undesignedated, the Lake Road generating funding, right? The remainder of that. And the remainder of the unassigned capital. So, that's our pavement management, and you can see the, kind of the breakdown below. We have incorporated some additional, like, in the future ones. So, Maple Street, we know Maple Street needs to get redone. We've been trying to apply for lots of money for eight years. Eight years. So, we're putting back in another round of lots of requests for that. Dire Street, we're working on a community connectivity grant for that. That one, I, we have, we think that there might be some possibilities there around the Dire Street, and this is really going to be to fund, that'll be the pavement, but it's also going to include the sidewalks and all of the sidewalk improvements that need to happen there. And then obviously, we know that Louisa Vian's also needs to be redone. These are, we, the reason why we break these out separately is because these are ones we're likely going to go for additional. we're likely going to go for additional, separate grant funding for outside of the traditional just pavement management plan. You would spend two-point-five million dollars on just Maple Street. Forget every other road, forget any other maintenance on any other road. That's not fair to the entire system, right? And so that's why we really try and seek grant money for the bulk of that, those projects.
Mary, I'm sorry, I'm still looking back a little bit lost. The six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that was left from the mystery money, where is that reflected?
From the Lake Road generating unimproved. We're going to get to those in the future, in future spots.
Just so I didn't miss it.
Yeah, you haven't missed it yet. So, um, any other questions on road construction?
Do you have that list from Lake Regenerating? Okay. Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. I just want to make sure I don't miss a piece. Highways is the next one. So this is our storm drainage, guide rail replacement, so a little bit of sidewalk work. Largely, a lot of our sidewalk work gets done in the major part of the project or in drainage. We are looking at doing another piece of the downtown drainage improvements. So there was some additional work that can be done, doesn't require us to completely excavate it. But we will need to do some additional improvements inside that downtown drainage. And then, of course, we have, you know, the continued, you know, sidewalk connections that have been on the plan for a while. They're going to be, they are a heavier lift. A lot of it requires some sort of easements that would have to be agreed upon as well as just generally putting in the infrastructure. That's going to be a heavier lift. These are-
I'm writing it down.
She's writing it down. Never mind. So that's our highways.
I have a question. Bear Hill, down by where the pond, where the water and the road kind of basically-
Guide rail.
Yeah.
We put the guide rails up.
You do?
Yep.
You did get those up?
We put those up.
That was a scary stretch to go down through in the wintertime.
Yes, no, we did put, I did get those, we did get those guide rails up. We used the guide rail money for that. And it was, that was very scary because it was literally road and water.
Water, yeah.
Road, water. Not much in between. And very dark at night. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we did get those up. The next one, bridges. This is where some of that six-hundred thousand is going to go, bridges, the footbridge. So our estimation that we've gotten right now is about six-hundred thousand dollars to repair, not replace, repair that abutment. So they've done some, they've done borings. The original structure for that bridge, actually, the spance was twice the size it currently is. Somewhere in the early nineteen hundreds, mid nineteen hundreds, it, they, the state filled in a portion and narrowed the throat of the river right there and created a shorter bridge. So they dumped a bunch of stuff in there to be able to, a bunch of stuff, material, rocks, stuff like that. You know, nothing, nothing terrible. But it's not a natural abutment or, it's not natural earth, undisturbed virgin earth that that abutment is sitting on, right? So that's likely why we're, you know, we're seeing the failure of what it is now is just because of that general overall settling over the, you know, many, many, many decades. But in order for us to be able to re, to fix that footing and that abutment, we have to basically re-engineer that abutment. That's going to include having to do some sort of coffer damming around that structure in order to be able to do the work under the water and get the final footings actually done. So it's, it's, it's an intensive project. Questions, you know, clearly are, you know, what do you do with the bridge, right? Do you invest six-hundred and, you know, six-hundred thousand dollars in this bridge? You know, we've had people, residents that live on the Prospect Street side and up and through those neighborhoods that are like, this is how we get over to downtown, right? Like, this is, this is our walking path to get to downtown. But ultimately, I mean, it's, it's a strong price tag.
Did, did we just get a quote on demolition?
Demolition would actually be more expensive. Yeah, because there, there is some additional abatement that would have to occur for that to happen. Yeah, it's ironic, right? Why can't we just, so, you know, that, maybe that is something that we, you know, ultimately decide to continue, but ultimately, I don't think that the town would desire leaving it closed like it is for really long durations of time. Some permanency around what the solution would need to be for that should occur. Obviously, this would have to, you know, if you decide to take that path, it has to go, has to be engineered, it has to go out to bid. All of those things have to happen. So it's not just, you know, we're going to hire the first, you know, the, the one person we've spoken to, right? We would clearly vet that out accordingly. But it is, it does have a hefty price tag. Everything with bridges, bridges and water, they always have a heavy price tag. So the footbridge, that is where a good portion of that lands. The repair of dams, so we have some dam work. Elmville, here's your list, Elmville, Crystal Pond, and Chase. So while the Chase reservoir is maintained by Connecticut Water, we do have maintenance that needs to happen on Elmville and the Crystal Pond dams. So Elmville, which is Cat Hollow, that one has to be, we have, there's some more repair work that needs to happen on that. Again, fifty thousand doesn't go very far when you're talking about repairing dams, but it doesn't sound as though our work that needs to be done is incredibly extensive. So we should be fine with what we've proposed. And then we have the additional, we have bridges that we are just acknowledging, the North Street Bridge, that one did not get accepted by the new federal and state bridge program. So that one will need to get replaced. And then there's two bridges on Blueville Road that, again, those are not eligible for that federal state bridge program. And so that would be the replacement of those.
So this is where you're saying the extra money-
Yeah, the footbridge is large, that's the largest component.
Reflected down here, general fund, six-hundred and forty.
Yep. Alright, the next page. Next page is public buildings. And this is where you're going to see some more of the Lake Regenerating funding, the seventy thousand. So we have the cameras on Main Street at fifty thousand. That was the pricing that we'd gotten previously. And again, just, I know that that was a conversation that was, had briefly with the KBA, and I know that there's more exploring that needs to be done with that, but just recognizing that, that, putting that in there. And then the Town Hall Fire System, we don't need to replace the entire system, but we do need to replace all of the detectors. So all of the in-room detectors that we have, those all have to be replaced. So that's, we did get a quote for that, so that's twenty thousand. So our proposal is to fund that out of those projects.
Mary, on the cameras, do we have any scope of work or anything to see what that would actually look like?
So we haven't, we haven't developed a, we do have a scope that was prepared previously. We have not, I have not had our IT company, our Novus, go back through that and really kind of parse through what it would be. It was, it was a, if I remember correctly, it was, it's ten or twelve cameras located on exterior buildings through Main Street. And into the Commerce Ave area, right? All the way, and I believe we had at least one or two cameras down by the footbridge, right? That was kind of what we were, what that project was looking at initially. Again, I would want to have Novus go back through from a standpoint of making sure, number one, that the cameras meet the current, whatever is being proposed to the town meets those current requirements that we have or restrictions that we have around that type of infrastructure. But number two, the connectivity of that, we wouldn't necessarily be utilizing general Wi-Fi or building Wi-Fi for that. We would want to have that on a individualized network, which we probably can do that from here at the Town Hall. I mean, we could probably easily put in a Wi-Fi bridge from the Town Hall that would then keep them all on our network. We currently supply, the, the community center currently receives all of its internet and phones from the Town Hall via a Wi-Fi bridge, right? So we currently have that, and it works very well. So we probably could get enough sightline down Main Street for that to occur. That would potentially, that would have some potential savings to it because then on the buildings themselves, you're just drawing electricity off of those buildings. But you would not need to have some sort of minor agreement, it wouldn't have to be anything lengthy, but a minor agreement with each building owner that they're absorbing that cost because clearly you wouldn't be able to parse out that. But that, I think, is a bigger conversation, right? And I know that, you know, that's not necessarily the, a conversation that can happen strictly within the confines of a budget process. That would have to be something that would happen longer term.
No, I was just looking at the cost and wondering about the scope. Because we did ours and it was much cheaper, but that's very extensive, so I was trying to envision it in my mind, whatever thinking.
Yeah.
And one thing I had gotten some feedback on this week is with it all being here in downtown, shouldn't the, this fall on the borough and not the town?
Yeah, and perhaps the, perhaps that's part of the conversation. I know KBA was also going to be having that conversation with the borough as well as to whether or not there's some shared capital investment lift on this. And that's possible, right? Again, part of that greater conversation with this. But identifying it in here because, you know, we were already three-quarters of the way through this document preparation when that came before you, so.
Yeah, and another comment I heard is, well, if they're putting cameras downtown, what about the rest of the businesses in Killianley? Shouldn't they get cameras too?
It's the same thing I heard too, was, well, I want one on my business.
Do they have people analyzing their stuff and jumping on their roofs and knocking over forty-five?
I think that there's challenges in different areas of the community, right? There absolutely is. And I understand and respect that, you know, while only focused in one area of the town, we've traditionally, that's, you know, been a conversation every time there's a program that's rolled out, and it's rolled out here in the downtown first before it's rolled out somewhere else. Again, could this be a wider vision and you opt to do something wider than this? Absolutely, right? Is it a, is it an entry point to start the conversation and then decide to expand further on? Absolutely, right? It all depends on what the palette is from and really should be driven by what your, where your public safety challenges are within the community, right? You don't need to put them all over the place, but you know, where, where there are challenges, that would make sense, right?
Yeah, I did have a conversation with someone I know who's a detective, and he said, while they can help, what happens a lot of the time is the crime just moves away from the cameras.
Sometimes that, yes, it can.
So.
You never know. But, um, any other questions on public buildings? Oh, yeah. So Lake Road Generating. So the additional Lake Road Generating in totality that we have coming out is for the, was this the footbridge? Forty thousand of it for dams, the fifty thousand for the cameras, drainage, forty-five thousand for that drainage work that we need, we were looking at having done, and then the remaining seven-hundred thousand is part of the paving. So that gives us the one-point-four million of what's remaining for Lake Road. Ready for Parks and Recreation? Parks and Rec Capital. A lot of this is LoSAP money. So the first one is resurfacing of the skate park. So the skate park itself, the, whatever, the base of it, not the structures, not the, not the components of it, but the base of it is asphalt, not concrete. So we have gaps in transition from the, from the ramps to the base, which, which, which is an issue, right? You know, an issue for those that are utilizing it, right? And so this project would be only removing that asphalt and pouring concrete throughout the entire thing to really make it a true skate park in that you don't have, normally skate parks are all one material, they're all concrete, right? For whatever reason, this one was built with an asphalt base, which was actually the old basketball court. And then they added the concrete structures on top of that. Well, as, you know, it's been a couple of decades, the asphalt is failing. So we need to rip out that asphalt and put in concrete. And so that's what this, we've gotten an estimation on that, it's about fifty-one thousand dollars. So we're proposing to use LoSAP money for that. The next one is the reconstruction of the baseball infield. So that one, we had gotten a, we had gotten a evaluation that had been done two years ago. We had had the company come in, evaluate the entire field. They did a really great job, give us some ideas around initial capital investment and what our projected long-term capital investment was on that. Really, everyone has agreed that the infield needs to get reconstructed. We have some pretty significant challenges with regards to the grades within there and the washouts of the clay into the soils. So they really need to rip out that infield and relay the infield. You know, we're estimating at sixty thousand. I think that that's likely going to be less than that. My friend Matt is looking at whether or not that's something they can take on in-house. He's really good. But if they can do that internally and just have to, like, buy the sod and do those kinds of things, then that will save some of the money. There is a grant on that. There is a individual that is donate, that is willing to donate a substantial portion of that project cost to, to take that on. So we're working with that, with that donor. We're very grateful for that, and hopefully that is something that can be taken on this fall for completion. The la, the next one for the current year is Lions Park. So Lions Park, that park is becoming a hot new thing down there. There's a lot of kids down there. So the equipment is very aged. The playscapes down there are very aged. We've had, we just recently had some failure with the swing sets. The top part of the swing set was disconnecting from the actual legs of the, of the swing set. We have remedied it for now, but we need to replace those swing sets. Those are ten thousand dollars up top. The play structures themselves also have had, you know, failures. We've been able to remedy them, but again, it's, we need to look at replacing the full structures in the, in Lions Park. Bucky is trying to work with a potential donor to help offset some of the costs on that. So that way, you know, it's not going to be all borne by the town. That park was initially installed by the Lions Club, which is why it's called Lions Park. So he's trying to go back and talk to the Lions Club about potentially reinvesting in, in that park. There is also some other modifications, like we would like to be able to make a small area on one side to be able to have off-street parking. So we're not kind of clogging up that road. There's a lot of people that are now utilizing that park. And we might have to look at something around a porta potty or something there on a more regular basis just because there isn't now a much higher volume of neighborhood children that are coming in and using that park. So it's great, it's great to be used, but we do need to do something with- Um, but we do need to do something with some of the infrastructure that's there. It's, it's really gone without love for a long time. So um, so we're looking at using LoSIP money and potential grant funding for that. And I will say, a play structure like what's out there, um, and I don't know if any of you guys have been to Lions Park. Um, but uh, the playscapes, they're averaging right now between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a playscape. Um, so you know, the costs, but they last for a long time and you know, they definitely get used. So it's, it's very good. Um, other than that, I think most of what you're seeing here, you've seen before in previous um, renovate, previous things, um, the Davis Park property, this is additional, um, we'll be using reserve funds for um, just uh, continuing to develop the plans for the relocation of the um, fields over there in preparation for any sewer expansion. Um, but we're starting to really kind of move forward towards that.
Where, where would be the access road for the Davis property? That gonna come off Route twelve?
Off of Route twelve. Yep, it would tee up with either S- Taos or not Taos. Taft or Seagrave. Taft or Seagrave would be either one of those two. I think it would probably tee up with Taft based on what, the last time I was out there and kind of walking around, I think it would probably tee up with Taft.
So since we really have not, you know, the, the sewer plant hasn't, you know, we don't have a plan yet, so we have some time to get the gravel off. Can they get enough gravel off or are they gonna? I, I don't know what the the ta- we're taking gravel off, but is that a detriment to our final elevation or then I'm hearing something, there's a uh, um, vernal pool in.
There is a vernal pool.
That's a real problem.
So the vernal pool, yeah, it's a real problem for the gravel operator. Um, it's got really great gravel around it. The vernal pool is gonna remain. Um, that area isn't gonna change. It does narrow the throat of that property where the fields would be, um, in that one specific location, but and that's why the upper part, the part of that property closest to Route twelve is not being touched because of the vernal pool. We would be able to bring though in the road, the drive from the top of Route twelve and we would be able to navigate it down to the lower back portion of that property. The parking would largely be be, would largely be in the south side of that property closer to the um, it's really like behind Anne Marie's house. Um, it's uh, when you're looking at the property from Route twelve, it's gonna be on the left-hand side. You got, so the vernal pool is almost right in front of you. You would then go around the side and that is where it would, um, where the larger amount of the parking would be. And then the fields would span going towards the north. Um, again, it's Lego blocks right now. We're trying to still figure out exactly what makes the most sense, but the road is gonna come off of Route twelve. I know that was a big concern about a number of the residents that live along those side neighborhoods because they didn't, you know, when it was originally pitched, they were pitching the road, the accessway into that that complex to be off of one of the residential roads, right? Wasn't gonna come off of Route twelve. Um, we all know that that's a challenge for residential streets. Um, and uh, you know, if you're gonna put an entire Little League complex back there, that's, that can be a really high volume of traffic. It's better for that to come off of a major road like Route twelve. So that's why we're really looking at trying to get that. There is an elevation change um, that we have to manage from Route twelve to the back of the property. There is an elevation change. It, it is absolutely feasible to do. Alec has already laid it all out, done the engineering around it, looked at the drainage requirements of it, the protection of the vernal pool, all of that. He's even laid out a trail, a walking trail around the parcel.
So would there be?
He has.
Would there be a, a, an emergency alternate option to?
Well, we have to. We would have to for, for emergency vehicle only.
Right, I mean.
Not for anybody to get, to use it, but just for emergency purpose, emergency vehicles, yes.
So because it's all, because it's all off of, gonna go off of Route twelve, that's gonna be, you know, you're gonna build a good road. It's right, a regular town-type road to get.
It's an entrance.
Will that be, will that be considered a town road?
It won't be considered a town road, but it, because it's a driveway. But it's still gonna be treated just like all of our other town drive facilities, right? So I mean, they'll, will they plow in the winter? Yes. Will they treat it in the winter? Yes. You know? They have to clear it. They have to make sure that there's no, you know, trees and stuff like that. Absolutely.
So there is no other, uh, there will be no other non-town access off of that road maybe that's?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's why.
Correct.
Keep it as a driveway.
Yes, yes, because it's not an actual road. It's a driveway. Yep. Okay. Done with parks. Schools, I have nothing to say. No, I'm only kidding. They will go over that with you when they come in. Water pollution control will also go over with you, water pollution control, when they meet with you at your April meeting. That gets us to the pink pages. So the pink pages are other funds. Some of these receive their revenue from the general fund like C N R. This is where the depreciation goes for all that has been built into all these other front pages and the Ds. Um, the depreciation gets deposited into this um, capital non-recurring fund, and then the expenditures happen out of there in accordance with the restrictions of that fund, right? So the first one is the town one. Um, so we have uh, several pieces of equipment that we're gonna be looking at replacing in the upcoming year, all of which are fully funded within the C N R fund. We're not asking for additional funds um, within the operating budget, but they have all reached their useful lives and they um, they're ready for replacement. And these are the funds available and the funds that are available are sufficient to be able to replace that vehicle or a piece of equipment. Make sense? And the same goes for the next two. The student transportation fund as well as the um, capital non-recurring for the sewer as well.
Mary, uh, just back on the previous page, quick question. On the police interceptor and uh, K nine, I'm assuming the K nine's gonna be in a SUV?
So our police interceptors are um, SUVs. We don't have anything but SUVs. The K nine will be um, in an SUV and we just recently actually did get um, awarded a grant that is going to be purchasing our next K nine. So we are gonna be retiring Murphy. Um, and we should do a full retirement ceremony for Murph. Um, we really should. Um, so we'll be onboarding on, so this grant will pay for um, a new K nine itself, the training for that K nine, as well as outfitting the vehicle. So the actual K nine unit that goes into the vehicle will be paid for under that grant. So that, that is helpful, but um, we release the full amount of the vehi- uh, full amount of the funds that is available in C N R for the vehicle. We release the full amount. But um, but yeah, so you guys will be looking at um, getting a new K nine. Hopefully, yeah, in the fall, you should be getting the new K nine in the fall. I'm gonna come back and visit for the retirement ceremony for Murph. Maybe we should give him a new jacket, another jacket. Murph ate a jacket once.
And it was a big deal.
It was a big deal. It was great. Um, so anyway, our side joke. Um, with the splash pad, um, that we are looking at installing the toddler splash pad, but with that, we will likely need to change out a lot of the fixtures of our existing splash pad. Number one, that, that equipment has been there for a while. It's really starting to show its, its, its age. It's not really dumping as well and it's not, I'm on the, still the town capital non-recurring. Um, but also in order to affectuate putting in a toddler pad, um, because we would be pulling from the same lo- I believe that we're gonna be pulling from the same well source. That could change. They might find another well source, but if they have to pull from the same well source, um, then we need to have a, a lower demand on the well, on the well. Um, so we will have to modify some of those fixtures on the existing pad in order to be able to balance and allow for the toddler splash pad doesn't have as much of a demand because it is lower volume, lower pressure, right? Much smaller. Um, but still, our existing splash pad, because of the heavy demand use of it, most of the fixtures that are on there are the ones that, you know, they like, they fill up the big bucket of water and then it dumps, right? That is really demanding on a system because it's constantly pulling and constantly filling large volumes of water where you can potentially do something more with um, sprays and other types of things that give um, similar water pressure, but not necessarily absorbing as, taking as much volume at the same time. So there's gonna be some balancing to take place.
The toddler pads, that, most of the, most of that comes up from the bottom, right?
Yeah, toddlers usually come up from the bottom. There is some that usual, that you'll have like, um, there's a turtle that I, I really think they should put the turtle in. Just my personal opinion.
Maybe a match up with Myrtle.
Yeah, with our grumpy turtle, right? We need to have a turtle. Um, but it has like a, almost like a little bit of a bub- bubble or waterfall effect that just comes off the sides.
Oh, I can see the kids already putting their hands trying to squish.
Right, and so, and but you, but with the toddler one, usually like if they put their hands over one of the little bubble spouts, it makes the other ones rise up a little bit, right? So they get to kind of play with their water pressure like that. It's kind of cool for them. It's cool for me too, but um, it's fine. There's a reason why I still have a five-year-old. Um, but uh, but that's kind of what we're looking at is those very low to the ground, much softer pressure uh, devices. So.
The one our church put in down in Jewett City is all out of the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't usually let splash on their heads.
Well, yeah, that's what they don't like. And that's what the challenge is with our existing splash pad is they wanna be out there, but then once those things dump, they do not wanna be out there. And so what they do is the runoff goes off to the side of the pad and they dig a little hole and now they have a puddle and they dig the hole bigger and now you have a pool and now they're playing in mud puddles. And that's what our toddlers end up playing in is these mud puddles. And then when it dries up, there's no water in there, right? So now they're ankle breakers, right? People walk and they don't realize there's a big hole on the side of the splash pad, right? So that will help kind of fix those components and give them something that they can really reasonably play in. Um, so student transportation is uh, the same as well as sewer. Now I won't back up anymore, I promise. NIPS fund, we've already kind of gone over that one, um, with the parks. So we're currently uh, charging the um, C N R for the street sweepers in here. Um, the parks, the half of the full-time position is currently slated um, for utilization out of this fund. Again, if you choose to move the whole thing over, you can do it for this year, but it's gonna, you'll need to figure out a way to re-shift it in the future. Um, the next page, capital reserves, um, the sand and gravel. This is the re- redevelopment of your Davis property. This is how much money we got. All right? Got a million dollars.
That won't go far.
He's not looking at me. Um, the information technology, so um, after we get through the current year, we're looking um, we're looking at having about um, two hundred ninety-six thousand, but we are expecting a pretty significant investment coming up. Um, that'll bring you down to a hundred and eighty-five. Um, that's why I continue to recommend that you put the fifty thousand in. Um, so this is reflecting, I, I take that back. At the end of the current year, we're expecting two hundred forty-five thousand. If you do the investment of the fifty thousand and we also have that expenditure out, we'll end next year at a hundred and eighty-six thousand. Right? Oh, I already, I will, yeah. And the um, expenditure this year, the eighty-four thousand dollars, a large portion of that is the replacement of equipment that we need to do for Windows eleven. So Windows eleven doesn't allow, can't run on the equipment that we purchased back in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty?
Yeah, so the, no, some of them are back from, we bought some pre-COVID.
That's right.
And there was a great way to replace a bunch of machines pre-COVID and at the time you had no way of knowing that those weren't gonna be compatible. So we're doing some of those in the current year with funds that we have available that are left, and then the rest will be in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yep.
Yeah, I ran into the same thing where I work. Um, one of the software programs I use for programming vehicles, the only computer we have in the entire facility is my laptop that can run it because I gotta run eleven Pro.
Yep.
Yeah, we have it till October first.
Yep, so we gotta get those rolled. Um, the next page is the Board of Ed's non-lapsing. This is just where they're landing right now. That last column is supposed to be the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So just recognize that. I, I have the wrong amounts up there or wrong dates up there. The next one um, is LoSIP. So LoSIP. Um, traditionally LoSIP was um, a pool of funding that the town um, would expend on eligible um, capital projects and then we would submit to the state for reimbursement. Well, the state has gotten cranky over that and they've decided that we have to first get approval from them in order to be able to do the project. And then secondly, they've put in all these additional parameters around the use of LoSIP money, including having to go to SHPO for any building that's what, over?
Nineteen sixty.
Yeah, anything that's older than nineteen sixty. We have to go to SHPO. Um, which dramatically changes, you know, SHPO is the state um, historic preservation office, right?
You don't wanna play with the state historical.
And it takes a lot longer to get through that, right? So um, they also have changed that once, so we didn't necessarily use up all of our LoSIP money every single year that was allocated to us because some capital projects just take more money than a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, right? And so we had an accumulation of LoSIP money. Um, once that money is used up um, in getting reimbursements from the state, they will send us here's your, here's your allocation for the year, but you still have to abide by all of these additional criteria, right? So it does also kind of change how we apply it, right? So we were never not using it for eligible things. However, their view of um, their current view of eligibility is much narrower than what um, had been previously applied even by our auditors, right? Because all of our funds have always been audited. They've never had an issue with our LoSIP. So um, I say that only that, you know, yes, we still have, we're, we're allocating money out for use of LoSIP. We are going through those pre-approval processes. It's taking longer for those projects to get through approvals. Um, and the scrutiny level is just much higher, which is fine. It just takes longer to get through that process. Um, and um, eventually you will receive the money directly from the state for LoSIP each year. However, you will still have to abide by all of these additional criteria that's in there. And SHPO is the biggest one that drives us all crazy because I don't think nineteen sixty is really that old.
So the money that we've already had accumulated.
Yeah.
That's, doesn't go through the scrutiny through the.
It does. It is still growing. Yeah, it's going through there, except we don't, so they won't just turn the money over to us. We have to ask for reimbursement from the state. So we have to get their approval for the project. We have to go through all these processes. We have to expend the money and then we have to get reimbursed by the state for the money that's, that had been previously um, allocated to the town. Once that is exhausted, the state will send us the money, but we will still have to go through the pre-approval process, the SHPO process, but we won't have to ask for reimbursement anymore because we'll already have the money. We just have to prove that all of that was expended in accordance with all of their criteria under LoSIP. So we don't have to front it anymore. We wouldn't have to front it anymore, but.
Well, you still have to spend it quicker.
Yeah, we still have to go through that whole process in order to get there.
Build up a little bit of a reserve.
Well, you can still, you still can build up the reserve. It's just, they've always been cranky about building up reserves in LoSIP. I mean, they've always been like they, I've ne- I, they've always shipped out the list of here, this is how much everybody has. Tell us why you really need to have LoSIP. And then we send them the, you know, the bill for one capital project, like here, and this is why, because you know, one year of LoSIP funding doesn't cover all of your town, because it's for town buildings, it's for parks, facilities, um, you know, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars doesn't go very far for that. It just doesn't, you know, I mean, just trying to redo the brick pointing on this building. Right, one, yeah, that would be three years worth of LoSIP money to redo just the brick repointing on the back part of this building, not even the front. So, you know, they get that we have to accumulate it, but you have to go through this entire process now. So, you know, they get that we have to accumulate it, but you have to go through this entire process now. And SHIPO takes time.
There's a reason why the Daniel's Fire Station took so long.
Exactly. Well, we, we actually lost funding. We lost funding for the windows at the community center because of SHIPO. Way back in the day, we had funding to replace all the windows in the community center. And the state wouldn't, the SHIPO wouldn't approve a damn window. And we ended, the, the funding ended up expiring. We couldn't get any more extensions and they just could not, they would not approve a window.
You, you're thinking common sense again, aren't you?
Yeah, like it is.
Well, the LoSIP money doesn't expire. The LoSIP funding doesn't expire. It doesn't. And, you know, we can get through. Each year just rolls over and accumulates. Even if we don't expend it, it accumulates, which works out well because we can use it for the larger projects. But again, you have to go through these processes and it just takes longer to get through those processes.
So if you were already going through the process to get one project done, you get the LoSIP money, you put it in your reserve. Now you use it for something different, you gotta start?
You gotta, yeah, you have to. Each project has to go through its own evaluation. It's project by project, not funding source.
So you're better off to?
Building by building.
Spend it as you, well, I don't.
Well, no, we have to expend, we have to get authorization by project.
Oh, no, okay.
By project.
But you gotta spend it sooner than let.
No, I mean, it doesn't, it's not about timing of spending it. It's about every project having to go through a very arduous approval process before you can actually get to the, doing the project.
But if you had a grant funding that had a deadline and you were just waiting on the screen?
Right, yeah, I mean, formerly, we've had grants that have had deadlines that also have had to go to SHIPO. And we've lost them because of that. LoSIP doesn't have that problem, but it does require now going all the way through SHIPO.
So is that why everybody else knocks down their building and builds new?
Oh, God.
So they don't have to go through SHIPO?
I don't know. It's hard. Yeah, it's harder to get it done and, you know, it'll limit, it doesn't, it just, we're, we, we wanna make sure that if you're gonna go through that entire process, that you're doing it for a robust application, you know? You know, we've done it, we've used LoSIP money to fix the stair, the front stairs of the town hall, right? Well, would you really go through an entire SHIPO application for, you know, a twenty-five thousand dollar, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's gonna deter people from even applying.
It's gonna make you wanna use it for much larger projects if you have to get through this entire big process. Which then doesn't help municipalities when they just need to spend twenty grand to fix whatever, right? To repour a new basement slab or something, right? They end up not being able to utilize that. So self-insured fund is the next one. And this is, we deposit those contributions into the self-insured fund. And this is where we manage any insurance claims. And so whether, you know, if, if we feel that the claim is gonna be in excess of the deductible, then we definitely file with our insurance. There are times that the deductible's not gonna, you know, we're not even gonna meet the deductible. So we just manage the claim out of our self-insurance fund here. We don't, we don't bring it up to our insurance carrier. Next one is the Nathan Prince Trust. This is a library trust. And this, this trust has been used for at least the last ten years to offset a pretty good chunk, thirty-five thousand dollars of your library book cost. So they've been buying the books for the library out of this trust fund. For at least the last ten years, we've put the majority of the books out of this fund. So it's a good endowment. The next one is the Fuel System Trust. And this is, this is funded by a three cent per gallon fuel surcharge. Everybody pays for that. Everybody, every gallon of gas or diesel that comes out of those pumps, everybody contributes three cents on that. And that goes to this fund and that manages the operations of the pump system. You asked for what we locked in our VR pricing at for diesel. Currently we are at two ninety-three. We locked in at two sixty-three. Heating oil ends up being the same. We were at two ninety-seven, we stayed at two ninety-seven. Gas, we were locked in at two ninety-nine, we're down to, we'll be down to two ninety, two seventy-nine. So those are the, that's our lock-ins for twenty twenty-six.
And those are our prices with our estimated fees.
Yep. You'll note that we don't have any real significant reductions in, in any of our fuel lines because of usage, right? Where there, we may be seeing some increase in usage, especially with, like with highway, with a lot of the capital projects that we've been doing. They've been having some in, increase in consumption. So we've left those, those budget lines flat, right? We didn't ask for an increase in them, but we didn't recognize any decrease in them. The next one is solid waste disposal, which was reported to you. I think previously our solid waste subcommittee reviewed this and approved it. There is, the increase for professional services is also for a hazardous waste day. And that incre, and they increased the contribution from their fund balance to cover that. So there's no change in the general fund request contribution towards this fund. And with that, I am done. God, you guys must be sick of listening to me. Can you imagine the first year I did this? I did this entire book in two hours.
Well, you have to, I guess.
Did it in two hours because of the fire. It's the fastest ever. Let him go. So your next meeting will be the, will be Tuesday with the Board of Education for them to review the Board of Education. I'm assuming that you're, you let me know, but I'm assuming that you're not gonna be needing to meet on Monday night. Cause usually Monday night is just a continuation of this presentation. The public hearing will be on April tenth, that, that's a Thursday, that's at the high school. No, yeah, the Board of Ed, yeah. And then after that, the following week is when you'll be meeting for deliberations. And, you know, you'll have to let me know which night, we have all four nights slated. Typically you do one or two nights. So I'm sure after you finish with the public hearing, the council chair can give me some directives on kind of where you guys are all thinking about going with that. And clearly, you know, for that, if there's any way I can prepare scenarios in advance for what, where you think you wanna land to present to the townspeople, more than happy to get those prepared in advance. So that way you can consider them when you meet for deliberations.
I'm on vacation that week, but I'll be able to zoom, I'll be, I'll be present.
And I'll make sure that if we have scenarios that I get them emailed to you in advance, so that way you can be looking at them.
Now, just to throw this out there, does anyone feel any need for meeting on Monday to go over anything she went over today? Cause we'd still have a half an hour now, we could do it now. All right, so we will not have Monday's meeting.
Okay. Yeah, and if anybody has any questions between now and then, feel free to just, you know, ask me, email me. The only thing the fire marshal asks you not to do is send smoke signals. Don't do it that way. He prefers not that. It did rain last night.
All right, anything further from council members? Mary, do you have anything further?
I have nothing else.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion was made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Kattula. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, this meeting is adjourned.